Okay, good evening. Call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the July meeting of the Wycomico County Board of Education. As we always do, we begin the meeting with a pledge to the flag and remind you today's meeting is being livestreamed and videotaped and you can view it at wcboe.org. Please stand and I'll lead us in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 3.2, approval of today's agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 3.3, moment of silence, which it's a good month. We didn't lose any of our colleagues over the last 30 days, so we won't have a moment of silence, which that's a good thing. 3.4, public comments. We have four this evening. Public comment section of the agenda is an opportunity for the superintendent and board to listen to individuals' own comments on topics concerning Wycomico County Public Schools. The board chairman has the right to limit public comments in length or those concerning personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals, appeals or legal matters that are before the board, negotiations and topics that are more appropriately addressed in closed session or privately with a staff member. Only verbal comments are permitted during public comment session of a board meeting. Written, printed, audio or video material may be submitted via comments at wcboe.org. No signs or posters may be displayed by the public during board meetings. Each speaker shall address all comments directly to the board and speak only from the designated location for public comments. And as you know, if you've been to many of these meetings, we limit public comment to three minutes for each individual. And I think Andrea will put a big clock up there when we're ready to start. So we'll take them in the order that they've been presented to me. Our first speaker is a retired teacher. Her name is Karen Miller. Her issue is CRT in school with a question mark. Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
I have a time standing in a minute for the first time in my life. I come before you this evening as a retired Wycomico County Public School teacher. I attempted to get my question answered privately by emailing a board member on two separate occasions but have not received a response. Therefore, I come this evening to have my question paid a part of the public record in the hopes that they will finally be answered on the follow-up to public comment section of the website. At a public forum on June 30th of this year, Mr. Palmer made two statements that I found interesting. He said, "One of the most valuable things I have learned is that in order to have a successful operation, you've got to establish effective communication between all parties involved." He also said, "I have another top priority, and that's to get rid of this CRT ideology that's in our schools." People will tell you it's not there, and they will try to convince you it's not there, but ladies and gentlemen, it's there and I need your help to get rid of it. So on July 4th, and again later that week, I attempted to establish effective communication with Mr. Palmer by emailing him to ask if he was able to give me a specific example of how, where, in which subject or grade he has seen it. I have not gotten a response to either email. When I first started hearing these claims about CRT, I reached out to my extensive faculty teachers in a wide variety of schools, grade levels and subjects throughout the county. Not one, I repeat, not one, could verify that CRT is taught at any level in our schools. I also reached out to a wide variety of parents, from conservatives to liberals. Again, not one could give me a single example of CRT being taught in schools. Not one. That a current board member would make a public declaration that it is in our schools and yet not be willing to answer my question privately makes me wonder what his motivation for making such a public statement is. Teacher morale is lower than I have ever seen it in the 23 years that I have been involved in Wycomico County Public Schools. At the same time, parental frustration is at its highest. Throwing unsubstantiated claims out in a public forum in what I can only assume is an attempt to garner votes is not just irresponsible, it is damaging to the public trust in our teachers and in our school system. It makes it harder for teachers to maintain support from parents in the community and therefore makes their job harder.
30 seconds.
I asked Mr. Palmer or the board to respond to my questions in the follow-up section by explaining where it exists since it's not part of our curriculum, clarifying what he meant or retracting his statement. To do any less is to do a disservice to our teachers and our students. Mr. Palmer, you are fond of saying that you were an instructor in the Naval Academy? Well, I'm the wife of Marie, so I expect more integrity from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Bishop Marcus Riddell, issue is threat made on blacks by student. Good evening.
Last time I spoke on this issue, I was told that this issue was under investigation and I have seen no results whatsoever of an investigation. Still very disturbed that I have actually seen nothing take place other than statements from Mike Lewis. I'd like to read a couple of things. Twelve-year-old arrested in connection to Wycomico Middle School bomb threat. Wycomico County Sheriff's Office says a 12-year-old female has been arrested in connection to the bomb threat that was called into Wycomico Middle School Thursday morning. Shortly before 9:00 a.m. Thursday, a call was placed directly to the administrative office at the school by an unknown subject stating that a bomb had been placed on school property, that its detonation was imminent. Administration immediately began evacuating the building while the fire department and local law enforcement resources responded to investigate the premises for any possible explosive device. The school was declared safe for re-entry approximately four hours later. Further investigation led deputies to identify the subject as a 12-year-old student who reportedly made the call from a nearby off-campus location that allowed her to watch the response of her phone call. Police say she was taken into custody and is currently being detained in the Lower Eastern Shore Children's Center pending further adjudication. She is charged with threat of mass violence, threat to explode destructive device, and disturbing school operations. But when I read from the WMDT report of, and I'm not using the young man's name, that made a statement to, let's have some fun and shoot some niggers, was not arrested or removed. And I still don't know that anything other than Mike Lewis's so-called threat assessment
30 seconds.
was done. So as I said before, it looks like we're just giving time for things to cool off and then everybody's going to forget about it. But I'm not going to forget about it. You didn't threaten students. He said, "Let's shoot some niggers." Nothing's been done. And the board should have acted immediately.
Thank you. Next speaker is Eileen Johnson, issue is accountability on racist video.
Hi, is there a time? Just that close? Okay. Hi, thank you. I come to the board once again today as a mom to two children in Wycomico County Public Schools. My son just graduated, my son just finished third grade and my daughter just graduated kindergarten. Our experience has been that they've been lovingly shepherded by educators and support staff. Your job as representatives, like educators, is to shepherd our children, most importantly to safety. Many times you will hear board representatives and school leaders say that their most solemn duty is safety. So it's from that concern that I asked for a full accounting of the racial terror video from Ms. Lewis. I believe the statement from President Malone and former Superintendent Hanlon was a very good statement that fully acknowledged the gravity and reality of that video and its repercussions and distrust, pain and reopening of wounds that viewing it brought to people. Mr. Malone and Dr. Hanlon both named the bigotry and threats of violence in that video. That's an important first step because there are some, namely Ms. Lewis, who somehow overlooked the step of simply recognizing reality. They want us to assume that we know, that they know, that racism and bigotry are wrong. But in reality, how in the world could we ever assume that? When families fail to teach their children what racism is and how to counter it, that's where schools can fill in the gap. We need reassurance from the school system that you are working to counter those racist attitudes, from seemingly benign comments to outright racial terror threats, and we must be vigilant in this. I had a 30-minute phone call with Ms. Lewis and I, I'm trying to talk as fast as I can. I realized that the reality of this video and its effect, especially on parents to black children, has not begun to pierce her worldview. Ms. Lewis is a mother who, like most of us parents, would walk through raging fire to save our children and who is wholly consumed by her child's pain. As a mom, I can understand that fully and I desperately hope that Ms. Lewis could begin to take a step outside the world she's currently in and into the shoes of those black parents who viewed that video, to feel the smallest bit of their pain and tiredness. It's my understanding that black folks are tired of showing up to meetings and asking for you to protect their children, asking for representatives to simply acknowledge reality. I asked Ms. Lewis why in God's name she could not nearly one month later simply acknowledge that this thing happened and this thing caused pain. She shared with me that the news stations had covered it, so why would she need to? This is not a moment for her to simply say hashtag teenagers. It's more of a moment where she needs to step into that pain. I give her the example of when my child's on a playground and he gets into a fight with someone else, we talk about what happened, my son apologizes, and then I don't take my son after he's gotten into an argument, I'll take him and bring him into the house and slam the door and not talk about it again. So we need to recognize reality and we also need reassurance that the guns have been removed from the premises.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Final speaker is Mr. Kevin Lindsey, issue is school safety.
Good evening, board. Congratulations, Dr. Stoffer, on being the new superintendent, but I'm gonna personally tell you, I was rooting for my friend, Mr. Briggs, over there. Hello, Ms. Lewis. You probably know who I am, and first of all, I want to apologize for tagging you on your personal page and I went to your page which you're running for election and I just want to say a couple of things face-to-face. I just feel as raising two African-American children in your district that I still do not feel comfortable with you making any decisions for my kids or any other kid. You have stated that you're to continue to run and that's your right and it's my right to vote whoever I want to vote for. Was very impressed with you on June 3rd, very impressed at the forum. What I'm not impressed with is the previous speaker stated that there is no statement. And if there is one, I'm sorry, but I believe there should have been one on your personal campaign page. And if the rumor is true that other African-Americans say that word, so it's okay, that is not your place or anybody that doesn't look like me's place to make that decision. My wife's family nickname is Precious. If any of you guys called her Precious, I'm going to be upset. And I know we live in a world where people don't look like me, can just walk around freely, say what they want and don't even think about the repercussions, but this is serious. Saying the word, I'm not going to say it, and actually holding a fake whatever they want to call it, I'm not happy with it. Your silence is a statement to me. One month, I haven't heard anything. A simple, "Look, I can't talk about it, I apologize, this is wrong, we're working and we're moving forward," would have been enough. But the fact that I haven't heard anything from you as my representative is really concerning. My daughter's concerned. She goes to school at Parkside. My son is concerned. And don't think these kids don't know what's going on.
30 seconds.
Thank you. That is the issue. I really think we are doubting our children, our students' ability to process everything that's going on. And the lack of accountability and leadership from every official locally that can't say anything because it's election time, it's just disheartening. So I appreciate everything you guys do. Dr. Malone, he referees my son's soccer game, I appreciate that. I know it's a tough job, but thank you and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes public comments. As always, we take all these comments seriously, we all take notes, take them under advisement, post answers to questions on our website, which we began, I think, in January or February, and we'll continue that practice. So 3.4, superintendent's report. Before I turn it over to our superintendent, it's appropriate to say welcome to your very first board meeting, Dr. Stoffer. He's been on the job now officially 12 days, so this will be his first evening with the board to do his superintendent's report, so we want to say welcome, glad to have you, and turn the meeting over to you now, Dr. Stoffer.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. I want to thank all the board members and all of those around the community that have supported me as I have entered this new role. I would also be remiss if I did not acknowledge the great team that I work with each and every day, those around this room, my senior leadership team, Dr. Briggs, Mrs. Miles, all of our directors in each of the areas, and really the entire staff around our school system. It is truly a team effort and I'm just very humbled and honored to be a part of that. So thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Malone and the board, for your confidence as we move forward. I will say that getting started on July 1st, I was very excited to do so, talked with our senior leadership team, with Mrs. Miles and Dr. Briggs, and we wanted to reach out to all of the new administrators and administrators in new positions around our schools. So we did that. I was able to visit each of the five new principals in the schools that they are now taking over in that leadership role on that first day. I know that other members of senior leadership made visits and a number of phone calls to new administrators as well. And we were also able to welcome staff and new staff, especially at central office as well as out at the school. So since that time, we've been busy doing a number of various community meetings, trying to be as visible as possible. My goal is to engage as many members of the community as I can. I was blessed to be able to speak with the Greater Salisbury Committee at their luncheon yesterday. We'll be speaking again tomorrow with our own facilities department. We had an exciting conference today for all of our supervisors, directors, administrators, principals, assistant principals around the school system at Salisbury University, and it was a tremendous leadership event for each of them, and that was an honor to be able to speak with them this morning as well. And we had a great motivational speaker this afternoon. So we've been doing, I think, a good job of getting out into the community, but my goal over the next four months is to do just that, to make as many connections as I can, learn as much from our community members as possible, and bring that back to the work that we do around our school system. I would encourage everyone to visit our website and take a look at the superintendent entry plan and read through that. It talks a little bit about the things that I just mentioned. It talks about the foundation that we currently have, our vision and our mission within Wycomico County Public Schools. It talks about my thoughts regarding principal leadership and how we are all leaders in our community. We all influence others and the importance of the work that we do and the importance that that work must be principled in just that. So I think we all need to think about what influence we do have and the leadership values that we want to instill in others and that others see through us. That's very important to me and that's a guiding force in the work that I see all of us as a community working together, moving forward and engaging in that planning process, which would be the last stage of that entry plan as we move forward with the blueprint for Maryland's future and the strategic plan that we have to do, not only at the state level but here locally as well. So it's been an exciting 12 days and I have really enjoyed it, and if you haven't seen me yet, please continue to look because my goal is to be as visible as possible as we move forward. Just some very quick stats on our summer programs. We have eight different types of summer programs happening right now in Wycomico County Public Schools. These programs are occurring in nine of our schools across all corners of the county. Currently, it is involving 1,243 students in these summer programs. Topics include academic enrichment, STEM, financial literacy and business, creative writing and musical theater. So I would applaud all of our staff that are involved in coordinating those programs. Also want to thank Dr. Briggs and Mr. Brady, Dr. Jones, Laura Jones and many others that are involved in planning and coordinating these opportunities around our school system. And they are tremendous opportunities for our students and something that I think our students benefit from each and every summer, but this summer is, I think, bigger and better than ever. So I'm proud of that. And since filling the role of superintendent, it has left a vacancy in the role of the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. So I am excited to say that the last few weeks that we have posted this position, we had a number of qualified applicants internally within our system as well as some that applied externally. We were able to conduct interviews through our senior leadership team and all of the directors among the Division of Business and Operations that were a part of that. We had, the depth of leadership that we have in this county is truly tremendous and it was something that I already knew, but really something that hit home with all of us as we conducted those interviews. And we were able to talk with a top candidate yesterday and finalized our decision, so it is my pleasure to announce the new Chief Finance and Operations Officer for Wycomico County Public Schools, Dr. Brian Rager. So I'm asking him to come forward if he will.
Thank you, Dr. Stoffer.
And he can take his new seat over there on the side.
By next meeting, we'll have a nameplate for him.
Have a new nameplate for sure.
I heard you.
So with that, that concludes my part, and then I will ask for Dr. Briggs to do the grants report.
Thank you, Dr. Stoffer. I'm pleased to be able to share some brief information from our June grants report. This past month, we received funding for seven grants totaling almost $8 million. As I shared during the June board meeting, we received over $7 million from MSD as part of the Maryland Leeds Grant Opportunity. The majority of this funding will enable us to provide a retention and recruitment incentive of $2,500 for all full-time employees this coming school year. Also from MSD, we received Judy Center Grants for Beaver Run and Pemberton to assist in ensuring our students are entering school ready to learn. Additional grants received included funds from the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance, the Foundation for Impact on Literacy and Learning and the Music Teachers National Association Foundation. Also, we submitted applications for another seven grants and I look forward to updating everyone on their status at an upcoming board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Briggs.
Okay.
Mr. Malone?
Thank you. Your first report of many, I hope, right?
Yes, well.
Thank you. So 4.1, approval of open session minutes from our June 23rd meeting. If you've had time to review them, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Mrs. Lewis wasn't at the last meeting, that's appropriate. Do you have that? Okay. It's carried. Next section, consent items, 5.1 to 5.7. So 5.8, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve the consent items?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose the 5.6.
6.
5.6. I approve of the rest.
Do you have that? Okay. All right, it's carried. Since the 2001 school year, WCPS has partnered with the Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Service to have single-family homes constructed onsite at our Career and Technology Center. The proposed contract would extend this partnership into the 2022-23 school year and lead to the 13th home produced by students in our CTE program. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve the contract with the Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Service?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll turn it over to the Bryans, Ashby and Rager.
I'll go ahead and introduce the history of the project and tell you a little bit about the history and where things are important.
Okay, Mr. Ashby.
Certainly, and it's a pleasure to be here. This project, the Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, has occurred since the 2000-2001 school year. During that time, we constructed 12 homes. After '08, we didn't build for...
We didn't build for several years when things were pretty lean. We resurrected the program and our last home was constructed in 2019. During COVID, this project was impossible. It was impossible to build a home virtually. We talked a lot about it, but we didn't get any construction done. And the students of the Parkside Career and Technology Center, under the direction of their instructors, and that includes the carpentry program, our electrical program, our HVAC program and our masonry program, complete the construction of this home. We begin on the home in September when the students return. Were able to finish construction by June. The home is moved in June to a lot within the city of Salisbury for final placement. And over the past 12 homes, we've involved approximately 450 students. It is a wonderful project, not only for the practical application of what they're learning in the classrooms and labs, but the students also take great pride in being able to place a home in their community. And this has been a wonderful partnership. It's something that means a lot to our CTE facility, and I would ask that you give this consideration and approve this project so that our students can once again build a home to put back into our community.
I will stand for any questions.
Okay. I can honestly say I fully support this. We were asked so many times in 2021 as we went back to school, when are we going to build a house? And it's, expanding this program and expand, anything we can do to expand CTE is wonderful. That's my comments.
I remember reading about this project before I came on the board, and I've been wondering, you know, why we had not heard of it. And thank you, Mr. Ashby, for all that you do and good luck.
Thank you.
Brian, do you remember approximately how many houses have been built? Because I know we did it prior to 2008 before it stopped.
From my count, this, we've completed 12 with Salisbury Neighborhood Housing. This is our 30 or 31st home in CT. Prior to the relationship with Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, we advertised the home and built for a family in the community. And the relationship was, and that was wonderful. We actually built a larger home at that time, but the relationship with Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, from the point of financing and ease of construction, has really helped to streamline things. So we're hoping to use a community partner. So we're hoping to use a community partner.
Mr. Ashby, thank you so much for your perseverance on getting this project up and going. I know that it's definitely something we have heard about in the community when it was going to start up. So thank you for making this happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I assume you're ready to vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Thank you, sirs.
Thank you.
6.2 Personnel Matters is for information only. So 7.1 Board Members Reports. Last time I started to my left, so this time I'll start with my right, with Mr. Palmer.
During the last month, I've been actively involved in our election process, and I mean really active in our election process. And there's no doubt that my attention to emails from all over have been not where they should be. But I guarantee you, I do answer them. I will go back to look at the ones that I've been said to miss, and I guarantee you, I will have responses. And I still ask all parents to come to these meetings to express their opinions about what they think is wrong, what they think is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Let me see if I can get it working.
What's that?
He's going to see if he can get it working.
Oh, okay.
When we come, I can come back to you.
I'll go to Ms. Suthowski.
I attended the county council meeting on Tuesday, July 5th, where our student athletes were acknowledged for winning state championships in track and field. People who know me know that I like to go around the community, and I talk to people. And while talking to people in the community and listening to their comments, I have compiled a list of suggestions given to me that I would like to share, and I have also submitted these in writing to Dr. Stoffer. Number one, parents and especially grandparents would like to have the reinstatement of American Education Week. Number two, the reinstatement of the superintendent's Open Doors Meeting each month. Three, and I liked this one because I had never, ever thought of this, that members of the school board have meet and greets in various parts of the county quarterly, not official meetings, but maybe have a Sunday afternoon meet and greet at Allen Community Hall, or go over to Mardella, or different places in the county, so that people out in the county, they may know their board representative, but they would not know those of us who represent other parts of the county. Fourth suggestion, to encourage our schools to reinstate PTAs, and also Chapter One Parent and Student Nights. I know I have attended a fabulous paint night at Glen Avenue School. I attended parent and student nights at both Fruitland Intermediate and at Prince Street School, and people would like to have these reinstated. Another concern was curriculum transparency. And parents would like to have posted on the individual school websites what is being taught in each classroom. And parents want to know more about the social and emotional curriculum that is mandated by the state of Maryland. But I'm going to ask parents and concerned citizens to please continue to contact me and other members of the board with your concerns. I will address these, and you know that I do. I almost immediately return all phone calls and emails, and I will pass them on to Dr. Stoffer. Thank you.
Thank you. Go back to Mr. Fitzgerald. You want to go around? Before I go to Mr. Brown, Vice Chairman Murray, Mr. Michael Murray's not with us, obviously. He is in Nebraska and another state, and probably nearby, but geography wasn't my best subject. It's in the continental U.S., though, I'm sure. He is president of the car association...
Pontiac.
Pontiac Car Association. He's presenting scholarships to deserving students, not only from this country, but from other countries. So I wanted to make note of that. He didn't just decide to not come to the meeting. He's doing a very, very important thing, presenting scholarships to very deserving students. And he decided to do it by driving there, so he had to leave today to get there by tomorrow and Thursday. So thank you. Mr. Brown.
As I'm riding around the county, I'm pleased to see a couple of projects going on in some of our schools. The grounds really look good so far, but I'm pleased to see that we're finally going to get some new windows in Chipman Elementary School. I've had a number of parents who have been concerned about that for some time now, and they're renovating it and putting in new doors and windows throughout. Also, I was by Park Pinehurst Elementary School, and I saw some trailers there, so I know that something's happening at Pinehurst Elementary School. And I'm certain that everybody's looking forward to opening up Beaver Run this coming year. We all had an opportunity to visit it about a month ago, and things looked terrific. It's going to be the state of the art, and I'm certain that the students, staff, and parents are going to be very proud of Beaver Run Elementary School. And we're moving forward with Mardella. Also, I'm pleased to see school buses running again. So that means that we have summer school programs, and as Dr. Stoffer just mentioned, we have programs going on in about nine different schools with over thousands of kids in those schools with various kind of enrichment programs, and some of them even for original credit if some students want to get ahead. The other thing that really concerns me that I miss most of all is there are no student representatives in this meeting. I'm looking forward to seeing them come September. It's amazing to me, you know, we got four high schools pretty much close together, but there are always different things going on, different exciting things in each one of the schools, even though we are in a close proximity. And finally, to Dr. Stoffer and the staff here at the central office, as well as the entire school system and the board, we look forward to working with you, and we're certain that we will have an enjoyable and rewarding year. I know that there are going to be challenges, but we're going to have to meet those challenges and just buckle down and do what's fair, do what's firm, be flexible. And when things go wrong, and they will, there will be some things that go south, and we'll just have to band together and fix them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Laird Lewis?
Hello. It has definitely been a very busy end of the school year and start to the summer. I first would like to extend congratulations again to Dr. Stoffer in his new position as superintendent, and Dr. Rager for his advancement. I actually had the opportunity to teach under Dr. Rager, and I will say it was a wonderful experience. So I'm looking forward to working with you in this degree. So congratulations on that. There are lots of things going on in our county right now. I know that there is a countywide reading incentive. I will say that I am three books in so far, so I'm participating in that reading challenge as well. I know that there are some reading challenges that are going on per school, and I see a lot of teachers who are posting what they're reading wherever they are reading at, and then they're doing small reviews and hashtags and things of sorts. So that's wonderful to see. So I am doing that. I'm also still working with my reading therapy dog. I have an English Bulldog, so we did a lot of visiting at the end of the school year, taking her around just to read to students at the end of the school year and things about getting prepared for summer and moving on to the next grade, and some wonderful books that I received from the media specialists. I have been to many of the same community events that the other board members have, so I'm not going to bore you by listing all of those. I will say we did have a wonderful send-off for Dr. Hanlon in the beginning for her retirement. Mabe has a lot of seminars and webinars that are available this summer, so I've done some research and looked into those, ones that I will be taking advantage of. And let's see. I did attend a county council meeting. I was not in attendance to the board meeting last month. I apologize for that. As many people know, my daughter's in High School Rodeo Association, and we do a lot of traveling, so I was not able to be at the board meeting. I was with her and our horse, Ruby. But I did attend the county council meeting where one of our youngest members was given a proclamation, Ally Gray. She attends North Salisbury, and she was given a proclamation for being Miss Little Princess for the Maryland High School Rodeo Association, which was a wonderful thing for her. She is in the fourth grade, so she was definitely excited. And we were also there. Ms. Ann was there. We recognized a lot of athletes who had gone above and beyond in their academics as well as their athletics. And I did have some additional words to state tonight, but as having a conversation with Mr. Craig, who is the board's legal counsel, it was deemed that this was not the place to read that statement or go into that. The board members up here, we are a seven-member entity. We work together. We decide together. We collaborate together. And we did decide that this was not the appropriate setting for me to give a personal statement of the events that have occurred within the past 30 days. I will tell you that there has been contact, and again, there will be a statement that will be made. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Is that going to work?
So my board report, the school fiscal year begins July 1st and runs to June 30th, so it's 2022-2023, and it puts me in mind of New Year's Day for the rest of the world is January 1st. For the school system, New Year's Day is July 1st. And so this year, we began the new year, the new school year, with a new leader, and now we have another new team member on the executive level with Dr. Rager. So I would say at this point in time, I don't make New Year's resolutions, but I would say that we should all be resolved at beginning of July 1st to move the ship forward. I mean, public education is important, as everyone knows, and as Mr. Brown pointed out, things do go wrong, and we try to fix them. Public education isn't perfect, but it's still pretty good in Wycomico County, and I'm very, very happy with the performance of the public schools, but we can always get better. And so with Dr. Stoffer in the lead and the administrative staff and all the wonderful teachers and staff members we have, the new hires we're making, look forward to a great school year. And over the next 30 days before we meet again, I'm sure there'll be a lot of activity to prepare for the new school year, and we're all looking very much forward to that. As I travel around the county, as Mr. Lindsey pointed out, I referee youth soccer. I see a lot of youths playing soccer. And at Crown, there's a high school league, and it's probably the largest high school league I've seen in the three or four summers I've been doing it, which is a very good sign. We have all the people back playing soccer, and they're all out there participating, and it's great to see. And we're all hoping, and I think it will come to pass, if we come back to school the day after Labor Day this year with no masks and no virtual, unless you do that by choice, it'll be the first time since, what, 2019, 2020? 2019 school we began that year. So here's hoping that continues. And with that...
No quotes?
No quotes tonight. I'll save them up for August. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you for attending, all of you.